We are unmuted.
Please, we just stood by our engagement states. They should give out fans for the nation of here. David, for their best.
Go call please.
Mayor Proentionary?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Here.
Councilwoman Liddell?
Here.
Councilwoman Brown?
Here.
Mayor Ashford?
Here.
Welcome to my Joe.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Man, for allowing me to speak. I'm not here to ask or sue a little tab fee to give you some background. On how this is a license for my sister and a one K about three years ago. A lot next to me came on the market and she was able to purchase. Okay, she lived in Pious Stone, continued to work. And save her nickels and dimes. Okay, we're not asking for a handout. We're asking for a helping hand. Okay, to keep our mortgage payment within reason for her. Jeff from Earthworks approached us. When she first purchased the land and he wanted some builder, he gave us a helping hand. He took the builder, prepped the ground unbelievably for free. It was a helping hand. Okay, she wishes to build a four hundred square foot cabin. She lives up here and works up here. Okay, it would keep the mortgage down, would enable her to continue this process of building an affordable house she can afford. It's a helping hand. I just paid the tab fee of ninety two hundred dollars today. So Jeff from Earthworks can come out and put that tab in. The lot next to us was purchased by a woman that wishes to build a tiny home as well. We hope to share expenses. I've contacted her builder and he's enthusiastic about this to share expenses to keep the mortgage down. So it's affordable. She can afford about five hundred, six hundred dollars. So when I come at the Ken after he does his beautiful job of approving the permit, I will come back and ask for a waiver. But I wanted to give some background. That's all I have to say.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Who is from the August sixteenth, the meeting?
How much we approve minutes from the August sixteenth meeting?
Also the August sixteen executive session.
Also the executive session.
All second.
Go please.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dohler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Liddell?
Yes.
Mayor Proentionary?
Yes.
Mayor Ashford?
Yes.
Report, City Minister.
Mayor Council, I don't have any reports. Nothing to report. Thank you. Thank you.
Right, Greg.
Good evening, Council. Last week we did receive or have access to the July gaming numbers. July was better than June for all three cities, but Cripple Creek was second, but Central did the best then Cripple Creek and then Live Pop. So that was good. The unfortunate news is that we're really not beating two thousand twenty two's numbers. On the coin in table drop basis, five of the seven months this year have been down. So we hope to see you good August.
Okay, presentations. New business. Consider approval of resolution twenty twenty three dash thirty three, amendment personnel handbook considered in Cripple Creek.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, as you can see in your packet, we have made many multiple changes to the personnel handbook. The Colorado Legislature was very busy this past spring as well as one update based on federal law. The Carolyn and I want to thank Charles Morton, who either drafted or reviewed all of these updates and approves them. And we are still working on one more update that Charles is helping us with that we'll bring to you, but since these are already in place, we wanted to get this started. Any questions?
I'm looking at we approve. Uh, resolution twenty twenty three thirty three, minimum of the personal handbook to Cripple Creek.
I'll second.
Go please.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Liddell?
Yes.
Mayor Proentionary?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Ashford?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In Adam B, regulation twenty twenty three thirty dash thirty two submitted ballot question that says regular. November seventh, two thousand twenty three election and authorizing the same to be held as a coordinated election.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This resolution is in front of you based on direction and prior meetings. Um, the course main thing that this resolution does is it sets the ballot question, which will serve also as the ballot title. Um, it does comport with the taxpayer bill of rights, also known as TABR. Which does require that this be phrased a certain way. So for instance, our very first. Um, statement, that very first clause is all TABR related, shall the city of Cripple Creek taxes be increased? By an estimated amount, TABR required that we plug in dollar amount for this one year. And then beyond that, uh, it does ask the voters to approve a one percent. Um, sales tax, which the question makes clear is an additional and new sales tax. And makes clear that um, the overall tax rate, sales tax rate in the city, if passed, would increase to three point three percent. This question then is very specific with regard to what the purposes of that. Um, the revenues that result from that sales tax levy um, can be used for, very specific. Um, this uh, language was um, put in in coordination with the school district. Um, but this will forever, you know, rein in how those dollars will be used. And then um, what this question does also make clear is that this. Sales tax levy will sunset. As you know, the question has been raised on whether um, what that sunset should be. Uh, the, the council could set it whatever it wants to set it at, but for the main um. For, but mainly, um, I've at least observed that there have been sort of two suggestions. Um, one would be sunsetting in two years. Um, another, uh, which has been advocated for by the school district would be sunsetting in four years. So my recommendation, and then what I would like to do is just take any questions generally. On the form of the resolution and the ballot question. And then I think it might be most helpful for council to discuss the sunset date. And once you kind of come to a consensus on that, we either amend here tonight. This resolution or don't amend it. And then um, it would be appropriate then to just move to approve a resolution without amendment or as presented. So let me take any questions generally from council at this point.
So I think I was the one that uh, suggested. Four years, and I think you'd said up to four years, but I think on a ballot, I'd have to say. Uh, four years.
Absolutely.
You can't say up.
Yes, but the up to four years was only a suggestion for the IGA so that we could deal with getting it. Approved two weeks, three weeks ago without delaying. Uh, that and debating over that question. So that was never intended to be language in the ballot question because you were exactly right, Councilwoman Brown. We could not uh, present the voters with, with that, and my, my recommendation is that we would not present the voters with that. Uh, I think it'd be best for council to just decide when you want to sunset it.
So that would make it December thirty first, twenty twenty eight, yes, in the language. Cause all of twenty twenty seven.
Twenty five, I think it's twenty seven.
Twenty seven.
Look, I'm going to.
Little support. Turn true.
Well, my. Move me.
Yeah. Yes.
Tom?
I'm not good with this at all.
Okay.
Okay, so on the basis of that, um, and if there are no further questions. Um, then a recommended motion would be to approve resolution number twenty three dash thirty two. Striking two thousand and twenty five in line. Seven of the ballot title under section two. And replacing twenty twenty five with twenty twenty seven.
So moved.
Thank you. Second, you say second. Your second. Go please. Never. Hold on a second. Before you vote, make sure that that's four years. Okay, that, that is.
All the twenty twenty three, oh, excuse me, all twenty twenty four, all twenty twenty five, it's all twenty twenty six and all twenty twenty seven. Thank you, thank you.
The votes, those questions in the audience.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Proentionary?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Liddell?
No.
Mayor Ashford?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Thanks, Grand. Thank you.
The school district, thank you very much. You'll make the proud.
Good luck.
Then I have a seat. Consider approval intergovernmental agreement from mutual aid and automatic aid response. While in far and emergency development.
Mayor Council, Joe, I'm Archie. Um, tonight in your packet, you have a document presented by the county. To memorialize the effective working relationships between the fire department and target. The team may operate in this environment, we help with it. There was two clear errors in the draft that was posted in the packet. I'll bring that to your attention. It was an updated version on the dice. It was highly having the two changes on page three. One completed a sentence that was omitted. And the other related to firing units checking out with the incident command part of just meetings. It's, that's just we be. So I think this is a common sense document. Could not. Any questions?
Wouldn't the fire department start working on putting this all together? Okay.
Yeah.
No, I, I'm glad to see it. I think it's over the uh, uh, southern, well, Fortella County in general. Um, it's great that the fire protection districts and the fire departments all work together and help each other out. I think it's.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I make a motion that we approve the intergovernmental agreement for mutual aid and automatic aid response to wildland, wildland fire and emergencies within Tyler County.
So.
Go please.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Liddell?
Yes.
Mayor Ashford?
Yeah.
You're not a bee. Consider approval of special service agreement with Bohan. Houston, Toronto services.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You've already approved for us. Go with the hand. This is a request to have mayor sign the contract. No family, TSA. Um, the cost on this is only a few, so. Right now we don't have any projects slated. Questions?
I had one quick one, Steve. Um, so. When we do have something come up, then you'll come back before us to approve the amount.
For what they're doing. Amount. Um, there's money budgeted for engineering. If it's going to be a big amount, then. I go to Frank and Frank kind of prove it, then we'll come back.
Okay, so uh, this back page here is that pretty much what's included without you having to come back before us?
That's just the scope of work. Um, stuff that we wanted them to follow.
Okay.
Sorry. Um, the, but the bid page. That was, I would submit.
Yeah.
To them, see where it's going to cost.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see, just to clarify, uh, I think the city administrator has up to twenty thousand to approve. So as long as we have money budgeted. And engineering is below twenty thousand, then they receive the straight approval or depending on the way it is. It's over that has to.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, how long have you been asking for that camera?
Twenty years.
Oh, is that the next, that's the next. Oh, okay. This for engineering. Yeah.
Yeah, even it's.
Yeah. Yeah, they went out like gents for these guys.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
No. I hear a motion. I make a motion to approve a professional service agreement with Bohan and Houston for on-call services. Contact.
Go play here.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Ashford?
Yeah.
Now look at.
Did I mean consider approval of purchase of sure camera, Steve?
As you asked, forty years I've been after this. Um, we got approved through our BOLO and SRO, SRO debt grant to purchase this camera. It is both a crawler camera and a push cameras. We can go anywhere from four inch lines up to eight inch, eighteen inch lines with this camera. Push camera can go two hundred feet if we push it that hard. The crawler will go a thousand feet. We're way behind on our sewer lines and we really need to start getting these inspected. And just for the helmet, I can't get soon enough because I have now have a beaver building a gowns. I need to see how Benny's doing. Or I'm gonna start digging to get this thing up. But yeah, this is to the grant. So no cost.
Someone's a good warranty on it?
Oh, yeah. Plus training. And we've been moved for different cameras. This is the camera you guys like the best and it's right in the middle of all costs.
Definitely.
Nope.
There's a motion.
Yeah, I'll motion that we approve the purchase with sewer camera.
All second.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Proentionary?
Yes.
Yes. Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now get, yeah, cameras get.
Yeah, that's right.
Now I'll see where that critters.
General Adam F. Under approval, additional paving, paving post in.
So what happened here was I had shortened what I was going to pave on Tyler one. The twelve hundred feet and then when the contractors got here. And I walked it with them. I had forgotten that I was shortening it. I went back to my original plan. So they paved an extra five hundred feet on Tyler one. Looks great, but it's. To the tune was more than this, but. Between work we did and stuff, they dropped it to forty thousand wheel or extra paving. So they didn't pave it. My fault. I forgot I'd shortened it and put it back to the original. All along I wanted to get that point. So it is a forty thousand dollar. The money is in the budget. We're budgeting for it. It's just gonna be less complicated for the new issue.
Um, I, I, my, yeah, okay. We didn't, uh, we had a half a million set aside for uh, paving and things like that, uh, in this past budget. Okay, um, we didn't spend that half million. It was four hundred and seventy thousand, seven, though. Three, 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 okay.
With this will be right at four hundred thousand, just a hero.
Okay, so we, we was pretty much in the, uh, we, we had the money.
Yes, we have the money.
Right.
Set aside some part of that funding to do sidewalk. The barriers too, so it wasn't all going towards.
Okay.
Right, so assuming we're top.
Top and snow.
So.
So that was, that was budgeted for this year, right?
Any other question? There a motion?
I will motion that be approved an additional payment for paving cost increase. I'll second. Go please.
Mayor Proentionary?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yeah.
Thank you, Council. Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
You're not a G. Public here, public hearing to consider approval of revolution. Twenty twenty three dash thirty five, proving that application of conditional use for the construction of a service parking lot. In the DB mix zone, Houston, get the. At certain real estate property legally described as lots twenty five through thirty three block nine. There are three month addition to Creek. Down in Creek. Yes. We're going. This time. May I have an opening statements? I will now open a public hearing on application for House George Colorado. For conditional use method to the construction of a service parking lot. In a BD mix zone, Houston district. At certain real property described as lot twenty five, two, three, thirty three block nine. Three month addition to Cripple Creek County, South Tyler. Notice this hearing has been given a required development code and copy of sub notice. And of the publisher's evidence are hereby made a part of the record of this proceeding. In consideration for the condition used to make to be approved, the hearing will address the approval standards. And criteria set forth in section four point six point two of the Crypt Creek Development Code. The procedure will be followed. For the public hearings. Will be as, as followed. First, status therefore. First present, summarize case, summarize the case. Second, applicant or the applicant's representatives might present any evidence in favor of the granting of the applicant. At conclusion of the applicant's case, any person wishing to speak before the application may present evidence. Number four, any person wishing to speak against the application may then present evidence. Number five, then I will ask for a motion closing of public comment. Number six, the applicant may then present any rebuttal evidence. All presenters and witnesses will identify themselves and provide their address before speaking. All statements and testimony shall be addressed to the council and not to the applicant. At the conclusion of the hearing, the city council will reconvene and deliberate and then make a decision on any application. The council may grant the application, deny the application or grant the application with conditions. If there are no objections to this jurisdiction of planning commission or the city council, in the form of substance or these proceedings. Hearing none. These staff, before the state staff court. Any uh, public comment will be limited to three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, Council, Kent Arsenal Planning Department. Uh, this is in a sense a continuation of our meeting last time. Uh, it's parking for the Schonman Hotel Casino Rockabillys. Uh, this is actually for staff parking located on the north side of Carr Avenue. Between the two hundred and three hundred block. So it's a lead and figureation of what was originally approved. So it's a, a new conditionally used permit. It's in the BB zone, which does require parking lots to have condition use. Uh, the problem is currently vacant lot used for construction staging. And uh, the. Proposed layout now is fifty four parking spaces where seventy nine were leaving, so actually reducing the number of spaces. And um. Still against the parking requirement ten months uh, from before. Uh, so this is zoning code. It's in the BB's district, just south of our three, three core, three four residential zone. Next. Uh, picture of that, uh, from Carr Street looking north, you see there. At the rear lot, there's some dirt and a large shelf uh, where the owl right away would be. Next. This is the original parking way up approved. Uh. The original C P. And it has the seventy nine parking spaces, has access from Carr Avenue. And uh, it's contained that way. Next. This is proposed. It has necessary parking spaces, uh, does have. Access basically the same as car. There is a. In the middle, in the bottom, what says fifteen, there are two handicap parking spaces. There is a proposed walkway coming out to the sidewalk for that. In the center, there is a drainage. Uh. Over, not a cold, but ditch soil uh, to conduct the drainage water down to Carr Avenue. And then further left, there is a proposed stairway for pedestrian access down to the alley. Oh, excuse me, the street sidewalk to the next. Again, a brief. Landscape plan showing there are clusters of trees being proposed. There is landscaping uh, along car. And there was landscape uh, around the perimeter, uh. And there was landscape, uh, around the perimeter, uh, also shown next. And then the lighting plan, which is based on, um. It was twenty foot on a lighting stand lights with a, uh. One foot candle, gets five foot above the pavement. Next. Uh, so I, I gave a copy on the dice of that, uh, resolution. Where this parking lot was approved before the more recent modifications, resolution twenty twenty-three. Right paperwork. It was resolution twenty eighteen dash zero seven. Some of those conditions of the parking lot was that. But what would offer alone the rest property line that is being maintained in the current design. Uh, also, this parking shall have these one deciduous shade trees for ten parking stalls. They're proposing fifty-four parking stalls and there are six trees proposed to meet exact criteria. All landscape areas we service underground sprinkler system. And the way that's also included in the proposal. And all parking lots must be paved with asphalt concrete, asphalt in the proposed. And the drainage will. The drainage well must have. Also, in the previous approval. The two thousand eighteen, uh, there were parking lot requirements. Light fixtures shall be fully shielded with light source. Mountain height shall be no taller than twenty feet. Currently in the B B zone, lights fixtures are limited to twelve. And then the same one foot candle, nomination of five feet above the ground. Uh, is required at that point. Lights shall be compatible with existing city street lights. So those were the requirements. Uh, from the resolution two thousand. These are. These are requirements that were placed on the most recently approved parking lots on Carr, north and south side of the. Uh, guest parking and the valley parking surface lots. The applicants submit grading plans. Drainage plans reviewed by city staff. The drawings and related construction documents should be provided to by the applicant for review and approved by city staff. Photometric and lighting plan shall be updated to meet the development cover grounds of five foot. Handles measured at twelve foot maximum height. The applicant is. Disagreeing with this requirement. Previous, uh, approval was for the twenty foot height, the same jet speed level. Uh, previously, the parking lots requirement for parking lots to be available for public use was included. On this valley parking and the public. Guest parking previously approved. That's just a copy of what was proposed. The applicant has issues with this item as well. And the fifth item is that the access to the alley, which is a new. Uh, proposed in the current design, uh, we're asking that be contained entirely on the. Applicant's property and not cross onto the others. Through the court. So this morning, any questions from, from council?
Yeah, um, the alley access, I'm kind of confused. Uh. In the staff report under the findings, six and seven. Mentions that the single entry will be off car. And then seven, it does not allow for a shortcut through traffic, but then on the drawings. Um, I can't remember what number it was on there. It's.
So yes.
Here, it's showing, um. End curb and gutter to provide access to the existing alley. Can you clarify that?
Um. It was an oversight of my part. I missed that note in the first review. So the not proposing access to car in and out off car. And then a rear alley access, which would. Then connect to second street. Uh, the, the grades behind this lot don't allow for that alley. Well, the right of ways there, it's impractical to actually have vehicle traffic in the alley. Meeting the north of this, most of this person. So the northwest corner, they do have access. They have been using that dirt. Uh, accessway currently we've asked that to be paved.
So it will allow for the.
So the.
Access from the alley off a second into the back.
Yes, that's right. That's what you proposed. So there would be potential for a shortcut. Uh, I'm not sure it would save anybody any time or effort on the simple to go down car to second street.
Okay, thank you.
Um, that was my question. Um, the other thing too, on the alley online, for what you have shown us, you showed us a through alley. It is not. It's unusable.
Yes, and there is a dedicated right of way which extends from second to third street.
Right.
But as we look at the alley, it's impractical to, on this right of way there. For practical use of vehicle traffic, even pedestrian traffic is very limited. I think there might be some pedestrian traffic top of the hill going down, but it is not a functional alleyway. You are correct. At the west end of the property on the north side, it is basically that grade with the current lot. And so there is reasonable grade access at that point. Which to the alley, then the alley will extend west to second street. So, um, that portion is being used by adjoining property. Uh, owners for access to their property as well. And it is currently used at that point for access to this lot for construction. Yeah, I guess you have, we have a brief presentation, I understand.
Well, may I, may I ask Ken just one clarification? Um, so Ken, um, is the intention that the conditions of the twenty eighteen resolution? Will remain applicable to the property except as changed. By this twenty twenty-three resolutions that have the tree, the trees and the underground sprinkler and the burn.
My understanding is this would be. Proceed as a new C U P, so those conditions. While the applicant is meeting those criteria in the proposed design are not specific requirements of the new C U P.
That will could speak to whether they would agree to those or not, I guess.
At this time, the applicant, uh, representing may, uh, present your favor of running the application.
Good evening, Council. I'm back to Lee. I'm the general manager of Bronco Billy's in Chamonix here in Kriple Creek. Thank you for letting us talk to you tonight about this. Um, most of my presentation is kind of a regurgitation of the things that Ken did, so I'll try to go through it pretty quickly and then get to. Any questions that you might have. Um, we're here before you tonight to talk about a conditional use permit for. A lot of the north side of Carr, that's just north of the Christmas end, that we're gonna use for our employees to park. Our employee entrance, Chamonix, will be on Carr Avenue. So employees could have a convenient way to get. Too late from work there, um, and all employees will have to come in through that. Entrance on cars and that'll keep them off, and it like they have to do now to get to work because there's no access in the back. And so go ahead. Just real quick, um, I know Ken has touched on this by everything in my presentation, but this was the original. He's talked about that, so let's go ahead. This is, um, Google Earth shot. Now Ken gave you one from street level where you could see the bluff that's on the north side of this. This is an overhead and you can see that alley access in the northwest corner. That Ken was talking about. Now what you can't see here is just to the north that. Are a couple of homes where the occupants of those homes, they use that alley generally. To park their vehicles. They park on that south side of their home. And so, um, when you think about, you know, our access to the alley, we are just trying to. Not interrupt or interfere with any of the citizens' accesses that they currently have. So if you go to the next one, it's really, it's, um, uh, what changed? Uh, Ken had this document there and he talked about it. But go one more. Um, I'm a very visual person. For me, um, you know, I have color code all these changes. Uh, Ken touched on, but I will, I will do. Um, in the orange circle, you can see an ADA ramp. That is meets the Americans with Disabilities Act code. For people that park in other those two ADA parking spaces that may need a ramp to get to that sidewalk. You guys are familiar with that area and you know it's kind of steep. The blue circle is just to the left of that is the concrete chase. Um, I know we've talked about drainage lot and it's feeding at last. And this concrete chase is the way for us to drain, uh, rainwater and snowmelt off of this property. And, uh, in a safe way, you know, and paving it allows us to prevent a lot of the dirt and mud that's gotten in the storm system. Um, that won't how they didn't pay. The yellow circle on the bottom left of the picture is a stairway that employees can use. You know, that's pretty steep where she goes from east to west on this, um, the height gets very rough for the parking lot down to Carr Avenue. And so we just wanted to put in a stair for convenience for our customers. The big purple circle that you see along the top, if you were to compare this with the original, why didn't we use parking spaces? Is because we removed that striding along the north edge. And we did that because, uh, we wanted to make for safer traffic flow. Anticipate this lot being filled with employees most of the time. And so that reduction in parking wasn't like it was some, uh, goal of ours. It was just to provide the safest parking for the employees. We eliminated those strikes in the north edge. Then the green circle in the top left corner is what, uh. Counselor much here was talking about how the curb and cutter ends that would allow that access to the alley. And so it's not, you know, we didn't do that other than that's the way it exists now. It's the way it has been and we're not trying to change that. Um. Uh, this is just an overhead shot, the Chamonix project. You can park it lots in that beige color. At the last meeting, we talked about the two on the left, but just so you can see the employee parking lot, how it relates to, um, the other lots. If, if you see that purple box that talks about the meeting and convention space in Chamonix. The very right edge of that purple box is where employees will have to enter to come to work. So you can see the convenience there in terms of location and proximity from the employee parking lot to where they'll come to work. Um. Next, I get into each of points, you may have mentioned, uh, section four point six point two of the legal. I've actually brought. Our council guest tonight, um, Caitlin Quander, if you have ever heard, she's been our land use attorney throughout this new process. Um, and I'm happy to advocate and review this. I mean, we feel like we're improving aesthetics. People go to dirt lot, the dirt lot for the construction in Chamonix. We're improving the training. Um, and we're trying to make a convenient place for our employees to park, um. And Caitlin, do you want to go through these or? Okay, so this is just each of the portions of the conditional permit application that, that we're addressing. Um, you can go ahead and scroll through these. Um, if we need to, we can pull these back up with, with Caitlin's expertise. I'm certainly not a lawyer and, um, wouldn't want to particularly, um. You know, with regards to lights, uh, I want to skip. Just a second because really I think it's all I've got. Yeah. So like I said, Ken touched just by every point I wanted to touch. But with regards to lights, something I want to share with the council. Is after the last meeting where the condition was known that we would have twelve feet light bulbs. As opposed to the twenty that were originally approved in twenty eighteen. We actually went back to our, our lighting contractor and the people that helped us with photometric studies. And they said a couple of things and you can imagine some of them are common sense. That if the lights were twelve feet off the ground and you have to read the code, you're gonna have to add a lot more light. At twelve feet high, they need to at twenty feet high. And so there's a cost to that. Um, they also said that it would be very bright. We were looking at the customer light. They said it had to look like a baseball game. If we had all these lots out here, um, with lights. And so I just want to say, you know, part of our, part of our goal is to. All the new stuff that we're building is to blend in with historical charm of the town. You know, the light fixtures we picked out from the parking lot were almost a million dollars. And those have been through H B C approved, the two lots that we talked about last time. But if we were to have to build twelve feet out of holes, we're gonna have to double it in several pieces, even more than double. The number of light bulbs and the light to read the code. And if we did that, that expense is gonna cause us to have to go back on. A less expensive light fixture that may not be as, as farming or lending in. Um, you know, we'd have to go back through all the approval processes, but I just, I want you all to be aware of, since the last meeting. We've been working like nonstop to try to figure out how to get this solution. We have to put electrical conduit in the ground where we pave. We have to know where the light bulbs are, put the electrical conduit in there. And so where the electrical conduit goes depends on how tall the light bulbs are. And we had, uh, doing conversations with Frank about even looking at the light. You know, there's some existing light bulbs in this employee lot we're talking about. We talked about going out and hanging one up, a few feet off the ground, and going out and hanging one twenty feet off the ground. And inviting you guys out on ninety and park just to see a difference. Um, but I just, uh, I want you to know that the, the twenty foot. That was originally approved and we planned for, and the twelve foot approval that we got for view, the petition that we got for view in the last meeting. The impact of the project means that that's more light bulbs. Parking lots are actually gonna be brighter. Because you've got more light bulbs, which we're happy to do whatever the city council requires and approves us to do in terms of lighting. But I just wanted to make that comments, you're aware of some of the things that we're doing like internally now. Um, with regards to irrigation, um, we will have underground irrigation, our cultures of trees. On both this employee parking lot and in the parking lot that we talked about in the last meeting. So that hasn't changed. And I believe that was the only honest part, yeah, this subject, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. And, uh, right. Oh, I would park. So I'm the last meeting, um, you know, I know Aaron, you had asked specifically. If, um, if I had an issue with public parking, you just said I did it. As a, as an operator of the, of the property, it wasn't a concern. But my boss, who's our CEO of the company, for all this, uh, he did have a concern in that. He has this concern for that it's somehow these walls control the property. Like, um, you know, he looked at it almost like an imminent domain. If he ever wanted to do something else with the land. If we said, oh wait, there's that city code that says you have to allow the people to park there. That it would somehow hinder us from having total control of our land. And so he was asking questions like. Are there any other parking lots in town, many of the other casinos or hotels that are part of the public parking? And if not, how would we be the only one? And so, I mean, some was going to make good sense. And so I'm, I'm not here speaking for him. I'm kind of on behalf of what his concerns were. This lot is not for customers. This lot is for employees and employees don't. And so we certainly, uh, want to be mindful of that by saying that it's open to the public and our employees will have anywhere. And so, um, I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys may have. Um, just, I mean, just like we told you last time, trying to get this thing built, trying to make it pretty simple and all proud of. And ready to open this year and December. So thank you for your support and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So regarding public parking, I can understand you, you want to have just for your employees. That's, I can understand that, but you're. But your other parking lots, you don't want to have this public parking and how are you gonna police that and are you gonna be booed?
Yeah, listen, that's a great question. I think we all know that if you park at Johnny Noah's parking lot. Yeah, listen, that's a great question. I think we all know that if you park at Johnny Noah's parking lot, no way and you'll get a boot on your car, right? I'm not advocating that. Yeah, I'm not advocating that at all. And like I told you, as an operator in the last meeting, I didn't have that big of a concern about it. But I think that my boss's concerns were legitimate enough that I should break you aware of it. Um you know, at some point, we may want to talk about that. He may want to talk about that in the future. But I thought it was a condition that was on the last one that should mention this, yes.
Yeah. Uh good evening, Caitlin Quander, uh legal counsel for the applicant. Um just to clarify that point, Baxter summarized it well. I think what's before you tonight. One of the proposed conditions includes that same language around public access and we would request that. Um for what's before you tonight, that 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 condition be removed because it really is intended for employees. Um and we very well may be coming back before you to look at an amendment to what was previously approved. To address that public component, but that's kind of a separate discussion for the future, but I wanted to share that, um kind of the reasoning behind it. Um and then I I think uh maybe I just address the the question that your counsel asked about the twenty eighteen conditions of approval. On the lighting, our request would be to use the language from the twenty eighteen approval about the twenty foot. And carry that through into the conditions of approval tonight instead of the twelve. Um and while it hasn't been discussed, it kind of leaned over to Baxter. To the extent that you want to bring in the other conditions of approval from twenty eighteen and carry those through. Um we would be amenable to restating those in this new conditional use permit if that's important to the city council.
I had a, on the the lighting, um. I don't, I don't have a problem with the twenty foot lights. I think less is better. Because we know that we did a parking lot at the Wildwood and. They their lights were twelve feet high and there's a lot of them in a small parking lot. And I noticed some of them already been getting hit. And it's just, it's, it takes up a lot of your parking.
So listen, I.
To get in and out and around and.
Just to meet the code with the one foot candle five feet off the ground at all the parking lot. That's what our lighting contractor has done. You know, I had a conversation with Frank just right before the meeting started. Um and we were talking about, you know, what if it was up to twenty feet? We can have our lighting guy tell us. What's the shortest a pole can be in the current locations plan that we can meet code? Is it nineteen feet? Is it eighteen feet? Is it seventeen feet? Is it fifteen feet? Whatever that height is. It's not like we're married to the idea of a twenty foot light pole. Just that's what was approved in twenty eighteen. So that's what the lighting contractor worked with. Yeah, but what what I would be willing to do, if you would, is if you could say up to twenty feet. We could go back. You guys met Cliff Corbin, our construction uh consultant um in the last meeting. But Cliff could go back to the lighting contractor and say, okay, redo your photometric study at different heights and tell us where does it meet the code and where is it not? And if that's sixteen feet, then I'd be happy with that. If it's twelve feet, which I know it's not, I'd be happy with that. I'm just saying if it was up to twenty. Then that might give you some comfort that we wouldn't go put out a twenty foot pole. And we would share those photometric studies with Ken or with Frank. Um to say, here's what our lighting consultant has told us is going to take. For us to meet code with light poles located in their current conditions. Because the materials that we bought now, the construction calendar as it's built now is for us to run conduit. Have electrical power to the locations that are on the drawings that you've all seen. If we had to go to a shorter pole, then we've got to add poles throughout that parking lot. And if we have to add those poles, then I've got to recover that cost somewhere. And the only place that makes sense is in the light fixtures, which we we love the light fixtures. We're happy to spend the money we're spending on them. Because we think they're so pretty and they blend in nicely with the others in town. But we would probably have to look for a way to save money on those if we had to go buy all the other poles. Does that make sense?
I for one am definitely interested in seeing the. The different heights that you guys can come up with and seeing where a happy medium would be.
Okay, well, I'll tell you, I'd like to reintroduce to you Cliff Corbin, who's been the head of. Construction for Full House since the beginning of this project. Cliff, if you would talk about uh your meetings and dealings with the lighting consultant, that would be awesome.
Cliff Corbin, thirty-two fourteen South Cotswold Manor, Kingwood, Texas. Thank you for allowing me to step up uh and speak to this if you don't mind. Um getting one particular light fixture of that style is going to be a challenge. So we can match the lumens and the output and put candles of what we specified with. Uh historic committee, but to get a couple of those light fixtures, one offs is going to be difficult. Uh but we can replicate it uh at twelve foot and at twenty foot or any increment thereof. But it would be difficult to get the actual fixture in a one count. You know, it's hard to find these fixtures without a book order.
But what about the whole digital study?
Oh, absolutely. Well, I mean, it's the same study. We can run it at twenty, nineteen, eighteen, seventeen, sixteen, fifteen. It'll tell you what this first has. It'll tell you that. Where the poles have to land. Uh Ken's seen our photometric study. He's very familiar with them, so happy to provide that information with you. And our lighting consultant is uh one of the best in the country, so they're very adept at doing this. Yeah, they they uh I can forward an email, but it was uh they they basically said it, this is really going to look like a baseball field. It's going to have a lot of hotspots in it. Um and there's, there's concern on our part that it's going to be significantly over to the neighbors. Um. And you know, that's what we're really trying to, we're trying to meet the code, the intent of the code, but we're not, we're also trying to be a good neighbor. But we moved our driveways to adjust it to be whatever needed to be done to satisfy the neighborhood. Um we've worked with the city, we've worked with Public Works, we're changing the drainage on First Street. At our expense, it's not even part of our project, but we're doing that just because we feel like it's important to be a good citizen, not only with our neighbors, but also with the city.
So we go up to twenty.
And then we'll have a different question, not about lights.
Okay.
By the way, appreciate it.
Did you have something?
Yeah, uh. You know. If you put in. The resolution or. You can go with different heights and all that and you gotta do all the studies. I would. It'd be my recommendation of what I think is. Go with the twenty foot and if you can, if you guys want to go shorter, you can, but we don't need to.
Absolutely. Listen, if if you do say that. We will go back to the lighting contractor and say, what does the photometric study look like a foot lower, two foot lower, three foot lower? And wherever we can meet the code, that's where we'll move lights. If you did what you just described.
We can be.
No, they would all be the same. Everything would be the same. It would be the same light, but I understand and I appreciate that and.
Less lights, the better.
Right, I agree.
Um my other question, are you going to have, other than just a sign that says employee lot only, somebody to. Control that because we all know humans, if nothing get closer to a door, they're going to park wherever.
No, we're, we're not going to police the lot. We do have a sign planned for there. Still got to go through HPC and all of that. Um but we do have a little monument sign there that says Chamonix Employee Parking. There's not, you know, anything big or anything like that.
I just. I know humans and they park wherever and then you're going to have employee spillage.
Right.
Out onto the streets and.
We've used that lot historically as an employee lot and at times other citizens parked there for various reasons and it was.
Yes, sir mayor, we're in the public hearing process. There's a lot of questions going back and forth. I think we need to go through the public hearing process. So they've made theirs instead of questions and answers, I think we need to. Go to the public hearing process and let the public speak if they're for or against and then we can. Then y'all can ask the questions wherever you want to. That's fine. Is that okay? Aaron, you agree?
I think that's, that's fine.
And at this time, uh. Anybody, any person wishing to speak and support the application, present evidence. Any none? Any person wishing to speak against the application may present evidence. You know, then I'll ask for motion closing public comment.
I motion that we close the public comment.
I'll second.
Go please. Yes.
Council Brown?
Yes.
Council Litherland?
Yes.
Mayor President Mary?
Yes.
Mayor Astrid?
Yes. After you may introduce any rebuttal if that's.
Thank you, Mayor.
That conclusion, Aaron, the city council will reconvene and will deliberate and make decisions in the application. The council may grant application, deny the application or grant application by the decisions. Your motion is going. Ending. Okay, yeah, here motion stop the public comment.
I think we have that.
Yeah, we're working on that.
Your motion is going. You back into.
Reconvene as council. I make a motion that we reconvene as council.
One second.
Go please.
Council Brown?
Yes.
Council Bollman?
Yes.
Council Litherland?
Yes.
Mayor President Mary?
Yes.
Mayor Astrid?
Yes. Now I think you can ask any questions you want to of them, of staff or talk amongst yourselves or whatever you want to do.
I don't have a problem in changing the conditions to twenty feet or employee parking only or not one.
The two main issues was lighting and then.
Um I'd like to make sure that's worded up to twenty feet so. They can. Do the. See whatever fits. This looks fun. And that's from the twenty eighteen. Um condition number five, A and B. Should address the concerns. Council, yeah, the mounting heights will be known taller than. So if condition number five from twenty eighteen is just reiterated verbatim. Uh we heard from the applicant that they are here for to that. So then we will do.
Yeah, that's good.
Changing this condition here. And putting in this one here. Fire. I will try, I will try, shall replace number three under the inclusion section.
Anything else? How do you change number four? You just change that.
Oh, yes.
I'll need to employ a part in only. If you just get rid of it? Or would you make that specifically employee part only?
Well, I'm not sure. Not sure that the. City would have. I mean, I understand the logic for eliminating it.
Yeah.
Um. And then I think council could discuss whether they wanted to. Restrict it to employee only. Um. But you might want to hear. From the applicant on that.
So that if if they were to put a sign that said employees only, would they have to pretty much? They force it themselves?
Of course.
Yeah. So we just don't want to have anything. We just want to get rid of both of the publics. Get rid of, yeah, okay.
I think you do away with the public and on the, I don't know what you've written on the height of the. I still like the up to, not to exceed twenty feet, but whatever the height has to be meant to meet code. If it's, if it ends up being nineteen or eighteen or whatever, I think that's what it should be.
Two thousand and eighteen position says no taller than twenty feet, so.
No taller than twenty feet, but I think it ought to say no taller than to meet code. And not taller than twenty feet. So twenty feet's the max, but if they can meet code at eighteen, that's in the eight.
With the same amount of lights they have.
Then we can add that. I think it would read. I think it would read, I think it would read this way. So if you look at the twenty eighteen resolution, I think it would read this way, let me offer this suggestion. And. Um counsel, if you're ready for me to offer this suggestion. Um so the light fixtures shall fully shield, I'm just reading right off of. Um from the team, but I'll insert a change. So light fixtures shall fully shield the light source full, full cutoff fixture in parentheses. To minimize glare and light trespass and to facilitate better vision. Now the height will be no more, shall no, be no taller than twenty feet. But not taller than photometric study shows with the poles remaining in position as shown in the plans. And then go on to include lots shall provide a minimum of one foot. Candle of elimination at five feet above the ground surface. Lighting shall not shine into adjacent property. And then the B. Condition, which is important, lighting use shall be compatible with the existing city street lights.
Okay. I think I'm ready.
And then do you think we're ready for?
And take off.
Hey.
Are we ready for a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, I make the motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-five. With the following changes. Under the approval section. Section number three shall be removed and replaced. With the wording from the twenty eighteen dash oh seven resolution. Section number five, do I need to re-read it off? I think the the record reflects as council wrote. And also striking. Under the approval section, number four. Or what?
I'll second.
Go please.
Council Litherland?
Yes.
Mayor President Mary?
Yes.
Council Brown?
Yes.
Council Bollman?
Yes.
Mayor Astrid?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you guys.
Okay, then I have eight. Public hearing to approve a resolution. Twenty twenty-three dash fourteen, accepting an annexation petition. For the Crofton North Southern Board Capitol Hill, an annexation, Ken?
Counsel, counsel, mayor.
With this proceeding will. Will uh be as follows. Open. Continue public hearing, confirming condition for access, annexation. The sole purpose of this continued here is to take public comment if there isn't. Number one, no additional staff presentation is needed. No additional petition. Is presentation need. Public comment will be allowed. Okay, Ken?
Yes, um this is the Southern Boy Capitol Hill Annexation. We've seen this a number of times before. And hopefully this is almost the last time we'll have to address it in council chambers. Um. So the first process is the approval of resolution. Excuse me, twenty-three dash fourteen, accepting the annexation petition. So just a brief summary, uh the petition contains all the information pertinent to the annexation. Including the. And the petition for the annexation was accepted, the resolution, resolution twenty twenty-three dash fourteen. And approved back in June by council. Has since been published appropriately in the public, in the paper of public notices. So the petition meets the criteria in revised statutes thirty-one dash twelve dash oh one oh seven. And the requested annexation meets the criteria describing. At section fifteen dash one dash thirty, the concrete municipal code. And again, it's been accepted back in June, the initial petition. Petition. So at this point. We're recommending approval of the petition. And resolution. Twenty twenty-three dash fourteen. Uh, any questions? I can address the council. Now, Ken is here.
No, I don't think we need any.
Thank you very much.
No further debate. Uh, public comments? You mean public comment? It's not. Motion to close the public comment, comment session.
I motion to close public comment.
I'll second.
Go please.
Councilwoman Litherland?
Yes.
Mayor President Mary?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Ashworth?
Yeah.
Okay, next gen item is consideration of resolution. Twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five.
We'll need to get a vote on twenty-three dash fourteen.
Okay.
We'll make a motion to approve resolution number two zero two three dash one four.
I'll second. Go please.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor President Mary?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Ashworth?
Yes.
You know, my resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five, making certain findings of fact regarding the proposal. Annexation of the parcel land in. City of Kripple Creek, Colorado. Ken?
Yes, um, same issue, Southern Boy Capitol Hills, uh, annexation. We've now approved the petition. Now we need to make the. Uh, approval resolution now, uh, finding effects, you know, the resolution has the required information within that. So this is a request for approval of resolution. Twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five. Um. Twenty-five acres, all the corners, assign the annexation. And annexation agreement is under review. We'll do that later tonight. All persons are looking for annexation within three hundred or three mile annexation area. And. Public notice was getting resolutions set on the eighth of June. Um, was duly notified through the paper. Multiple publications. Again, familiar with the property, as the man of Stan, area, leave that area. And, uh. Request substantially compliance with Colorado revised statutes thirty-eight on total dash one oh seven one. There is no actual election required. Because all of the applicants have signed the agreement. Therefore, in public election, the voter is not required. No additional charging conditions are imposed, except as, uh, proposed to be. Provided in the additional annexation and as we appear in the annexation. Further item of the agenda. We recommend that we prove all, uh, will find the facts resolution. Questions?
There a motion?
I make a motion that we approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five.
Second.
Go please.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor President Mary?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Litherland?
Yeah.
Mayor Ashworth?
Yeah.
All right. General J. Second reading and public hearing to consider. The adoption of orders. Twenty twenty-three dash oh five, in order to the city. Kripple Creek. Annex, annexing the property known as Southern Boy Capitol Hill and annexation. We open public hearing again.
Yes. This is just a, um. Legislative matter.
Yeah.
So we would have, um, take, um, public hearings, so please do open. Uh, public hearings, but because it's legislative, you can simply ask for any public comment after Ken's presentation.
Any public comment this time? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is basically the lead of the whole annexation process. So. With, uh, this public hearing, ordinance. Twenty twenty-three dash zero five. This action will. Bring the property into the city. And so. Basically, we need all the requirements to make that happen. Again, the location, property. Uh. So any questions? But we're familiar with the projects we talked about many times, so. Uh. We've got the requirements, and so we. Encourage you to approve ordinance. Twenty twenty-three dash zero five, annexing. Southern Boy Capitol Hill property into the city.
Basically, I just have a question. Um. With the order, with this, uh, it doesn't restrict access to the folks who are outside of the the property lines. The one we refer to is this radar. When.
There are properties to the south of the subject property, yes. Uh, it doesn't address, it's a private road access, it's owned by the same people, so it's not. Allowing it and it's not disallowed, so there's no change of the current situation, just bringing the property into the city. We'll get into these, uh, annexation agreement, which is our next item. We address access across the property.
I got your motion? Are we closing the public?
Yes, it's just, just to be clear, so the record's clear, now that Ken's made his presentation, let's just. Ask, uh, mayor, if he would, just ask for any public comment. So that we're clear after he's made his presentation that we've had an opportunity for public comment.
Do we have any public comment?
Thank you.
If not, your motion. Motion to be closed, public hearing?
I'll second.
Go please.
Mayor President Mary?
Yes.
Councilwoman Litherland?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Ashworth?
Yeah. Okay, go. Give me the evidence. Yeah, our motion will be approved, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh five.
I'll second.
Go please.
Councilwoman Litherland?
Yes.
Mayor President Mary?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Ashworth?
Yeah.
United K, consider approval of annexation agreement with John and Karen Freeman. Ken?
You know, trying to, you know, the. We have an agreement for the conditions of the annexation, which we have, by the city and the applicant. If somebody was to sense. Um. The conditions of the. Uh. Agreement are that the applicant will undergo agreement, your local utilities, the gas and electric, city's not providing these resources. Bring those utilities into the property for his use. Extension of water and service services to property shall be responsible of the owner. So any future development will be. There at their expense to bring it in. There are currently some. Water. Easement to the property itself, as well as, uh. Power easements. And those will have to be maintained in future development. Any extension of Fourth Street to the curb and gutter, decide who else will be responsibility owners. So the future development plans, uh, city will not be responsible for those developments, but as part of the development. The orders of the property will be required from that. Uh, owner will be responsible for ensuring proper street drainage and stormwater management in the annex properly. What modifications he makes, that will be responsible for treating the, managing the water runoff. And the extension of ride away easements, including utilities from El Paso Avenue. Um, and. Shall be responsible, the owner, uh. Future utility development. Is anticipated requiring new system. And to complete that new, anticipated that, uh, right of way for those utilities to be required. Across one would be the El Paso extension. Yeah, that's the details of development as proposed. We're just ensuring that we have opportunity to have that access. Yeah. Basically summarizes the conditions, uh, that we're asking. Any questions? Now, if it is here.
I've got one question. On, uh. The access. Of your property where you live in radars. Such a common road right now, right? No.
As it sits right now, being that it's still in Teller County or from the process, there. The, they still have access through that property. Uh, but there's actually. From my understanding, working with Brian Kincaid from the county, there's still no actual. Easement for anybody to go through that property full permit. Um, partially, what we're trying to do with some of this property, which can get this annexation in, is to at least get it. Some access up to what is right now, um, Hayden Raider has some lots there in the middle of the road. That go to radars and to our houses over. Keep further going south. So we would have to then work something with, um, Hayden Raider on those five lots that. People would have to ease it, do any development further past. The south of where we're annex. Um. The intent is to obviously not block anybody from going in and out of there. If we do a subdivision or minor subdivision of that area. What we're going to do is then add in, uh, access road or an access easement through. What is the road now, um, and defining an actual road. Through that area, um, for access for the, for city, for EMS, for, um, fire and all that. But it, we'll just have to keep working through it. We get this annexed once we actually get into a minor subdivision of that property.
If you intend to. Good, easy material.
The intent is to, yes, I, I, I'm, I know that there's going to have to be one. There's no intent for me to, to try to block that. I know that going into this, um, so part of that. Road or what we will be road, um, will then be. I don't know if it's considered property of this, the city or how that's going to work, but at least giving an easement right there. As we define. Through surveys, an actual road that will go through there and defining, uh, you know, access for people, at least to get up to. That southern portion of what we're annexing into the city. After that, I mean, I can't guarantee Hayden Raider will give anybody access past that for permits. Um, the way it sits right now for where we're at for Hayden on Oriole Street, if you extend Oriole Street to the west. It actually then turns and then comes back north down the hill to sixty-seven, which is the actual legal. Easement road for all of that property up there on that hill. There's no road there, obviously, now. Um, but, you know. At least this way, we can at least try to get something moving in that direction, so people might have access in the future to develop anything. Right there where we're at and or further south into Teller County. But right now, Teller County has a. The legal access off of sixty-seven, which there's no even, no road there. It'll take. Hundred thousand dollars to put a road in like that, but and then get in the, followed with the state and everything else from. Trying to get that access in there, but this is one step closer from what we're trying to do is get partially easement through there for access for water, electric, and sewer.
Yeah, like you answered my question, yeah.
Yeah. Anything else?
If you have any question, so. Well, I, you know, here. Consider next. Consider approval of annexation agreement with John and Karen Freeman.
I make the motion that we approve the annexation agreement with John and Karen Freeman.
Second.
Go please.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor President Mary?
Yes.
Councilwoman Litherland?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Ashworth?
Yeah.
Our general L. Consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-four. Then the previous certificate of appropriate. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash seventeen for three two-story fourplex modular homes. Located in the D downtown zone district. That certain real property described as. Block six to ten, block twenty-nine, Freeman and Dayton, and wait. Five. Feet, eight inches of block five, block twenty-nine, Freeman Edition to Kripple Creek County of Teller. Well, ready?
Evening, council, Mayor Ashworth and Regent Council. Renee Muller, Historic Preservation Coordinator. I'm here tonight to present the Central Casino's request for a modification. To a certificate of appropriateness for a project in the historic district. Uh, this is the original proposed front elevation design submitted by the applicant in twenty twenty-one. In September of twenty twenty-one, the Central Casino requested a certificate of appropriateness. For three two-story fourplex modulars, a total of twelve units. Uh, located at one fifty, one sixty, and one seventy east. The Sonic, the exterior design of the project included small porches and architectural details and engagements. The COA was granted in resolution twenty twenty-one seventeen. Please honor the design the applicant presented in the previous picture with the condition that the colors of the houses. Be selected from a pre-approved material list. In the original application, the applicant stated that the porches. If the HP Commission had approved, would be added once the buildings arrived. Or were set. In addition, they stated that no rear stairs would be required due to the building being constructed on a flat grade. The applicant is requesting a modification to the COA due to construction conditions such as the lack of a flat grade. The applicant feels that the elevations and designs presented and approved are no longer feasible. This is a picture taken by staff, uh, from the Sonic Avenue that shows the project. Note the inconsistencies when compared to the approved elevation. As built lacks proposed detailing, the applicant is requesting approval to leave the porches hot. And is unable to apply gated detailing due to the roof pitch. The widening sidewalks would be. Be required for ADA access in. In order to add the porches at this time. The front porch is presented in the approved elevations are not present in the current condition. Applicant proposed corrections to that is to modify the COA. To eliminate the requirements of porches. On the rear elevations. Uh, we have, they've been changed due to the grade of the lots. Applicant proposed corrections for those changes are. On the back, one fifth of East Masonic. Modified the COA to allow the addition of concrete steps. On the back of one fifty and one sixty, the Masonic bringing the approved siding. Down to cover the exposed concrete foundation to meet building code, which is six inches above grade. On the back of one seventy east Masonic. Brings the dirt up higher and covered the foundation with landscape and stone features. Due to the change in grade, the backs of one sixty and one seventy east Masonic. This will require steering rest. Applicant proposes steel stairs with perforated stair. Land stair and landing surfaces. The commission approved a white color and the applicant is requesting black. Current light fixtures do not match the design given in the other drawing presented to planning and HP. Applicant agrees to install fixtures that represent the ones in previous drawings. Now, of in the upper left-hand corner, this is the south end of, uh, one fifty east Masonic and is to have siding added to cover the exposed concrete. Where that orange arrow is. And one fifty east Masonic, just the rear elevation, which, um, is proposed concrete steps as built. I'm, I apologize, this is a little bit off our picture. They were just pouring that day, so I think it probably looks a lot nicer now. It doesn't miss picture. Upper left rear view of one sixty east Masonic, we took those, uh, corrections. You can see the exposed concrete. Uh, the proposal was. Uh, the proposal was one sixty Masonic rear rear elevation as being requested with proposed corrections. And stairs to be amended in the twenty twenty one seventeen resolution. Rear view of one seventy East Masonic before proposed corrections are applied is in the upper left-hand corner. The lower left-hand corner is the same address with rear elevations. Showing the stairs, the corrections of additional siding and landscaping to meet the building code. Uh, these are pictures uh, given to me by Eric. For the applicant. Um, and it does show on the one that faces Masonic, the one sis- one sixty Masonic does show. The porches would be tight on the west and east end of East Masonic if they were required. This is a photograph also provided by Eric Rose. Of the one fifty East Masonic, that's the one that has cement stairs on the back, it shows. A requirement for grading and widening sidewalks to accommodate ADA access if porches were present. Uh, Commissioner, this is a H P Commission's analysis and Commissioner Dixie Claire had concerns regarding the rear elevations. And this thought that the stairs looked industrial. She also felt that. Project did not represent what was originally proposed. She found the applicant's response. Her reasoning for the changes to the front elevation was not relevant and the applicant had the ability to accomplish porches with some effort. Alternative Commissioner Susan Alcum stated a concern that the removal of porches from the original proposal. But there was no usable outdoor space for private residents and she believed that the porches could be added if sidewalks were widened. Commissioner J R Gatlin requested that the light fixtures currently on the building be replaced. Be replaced with fixtures that match the drawings submitted. And Commissioner Gatlin stated that he would approve of the perforated metal stairs. Provided they were painted the color of trim, which was white or the color of the siding, stating it would leave the lighter color to soften the industrial look of the stairs. This is a light fixture that was approved um, by myself. Through direction of the H P Commission. H P Commission recommendation, based on analysis and votes taken by the H P Commission's recommendation. Was to approve the Resolution twenty twenty three dash four. Regarding porches, there shall be a removal of the requirement of front steps due to the current grade. And ADA requirements, also removal of requirements of railings and balusters on the original proposed porches. The exposed foundation on one fifty, one sixty and one seventy shall be covered with. Approved existing siding type in conjunction with landscape to meet the six foot or six inch from grade allowance in building code. Concrete steps at the back of one fifty East Masonic shall be allowed as currently built. The proposed rear entrance of steel stairs shall be allowed. They shall be painted with the color of the building's trim. Which is white with the color of the building's siding. The applicant will change the exterior lighting to the design approved by staff. A note uh, here is staff has since received a request from the applicant regarding the stairs to be able to paint the railing black. The applicant states it will match the exterior light fixtures as well as other railings in the immediate area. And I just wanted to make a note to you guys that the attached resolution that you were given. Uh, reflects the approval stated above by the H P Commission and requires the stair handrails to match the trim white with color. The building siding. Questions?
The only question I have is this um, Eric, the the. The center, in the center of all the apartments where all the dirt is. Wha- what are you going to do with the center of that?
Um, you want me to address that first or you want me to go over it?
Well, I I was just curious.
Let me answer your question first, Tom. Um, right now it's open for. Um, unloading and loading. It'll be fully landscaped. There are some plants already planted. Um, there'll also be a sitting area with a couple benches in that though as well. So you'll still eventually you'll still be able to come off the street. Um, but it'll be maybe ten feet and then the rest of it'll be. Landscape, sitting areas, stuff like that. Right now it's open. We still had construction there yesterday, so. Um, okay, if I can address everything else real quick, um, again, I'm not gonna go into details. Um, of all the back and forth and the long journey that we've had. Um, and first of all, obviously, thanks for. Letting us do this project, um. Again, considering that we need affordable housing here in Purple Creek, um, that obviously was our goal. And it has been an extremely long journey, um, but we are just about at the finish line, so. Um, the project obviously was to create affordable housing, um. And despite numerous delays, setbacks, pushbacks, um, different things that we had to change, handicap accessibility, um. Not having porches, there there was never once we started the foundation that it could be at the same because of the layout. Um, the height of the building was changed and approved administratively because of transportation. So again, it's been, it's been an ongoing, obviously, bell. It's taken us twice as long as we had hoped for. Um, but the end result, I think we have delivered. Exactly what we talked about. Um, it may look a little bit different, but it is same building. Looks the same, same apartment, um. And everything that we've had to do, um, again, we've gone back and forth and we've accomplished that. Um, so it is what we envision. We currently have ten people living in building one fifty Masonic. So we were given temporary occupancy. Um, six of those are Century Casino employees. We expect that to be about the same going throughout the next two, so about sixty percent. Um, it includes a twelve-year-old that's going to the junior high school. Includes families, um, roommates, so a little bit of everything, but twelve, or sorry, ten people. Um, that live in Purple Creek now because of the affordable housing. One moved from Florida and came back to work for us, um, so it's been. It has done exactly what we had hoped it would do, um. That being said, again, everything is pretty much completed on that list. All those photos of the siding and everything is already done. Um, the sidewalks in the back are done. Um, the light fixtures were actually installed today, so everything on that list is is one hundred percent completed. Except for obviously the stairs on the back of one sixty and one seventy. Um, they are in production and we expect them to be installed within the next couple weeks. Our only request on the um, proposal tonight for the uh, resolution is that we add the option of making that black. Um, instead of white or the color of the trim. There is a reason why everything is black in town, all up and down Bennett Avenue. It hides the dirt. It looks much better than white or a gray or a green would look. Um, so every railing up and down Bennett, um, every railing that's around town, they're all black. It is the way that they come. And after the meeting with H P, the company that is producing um, the stale uh, railings. Um, highly recommended, he said he needed a little more cost. Um, it won't, it'll have to be redone. We won't even do it on the foot. It just, it didn't make any sense and that's why. Um, again, like everything else that's in town, we're just asking that they're probably blacking out. It's the resolution. That's the only change on the resolution that. Um, we're requesting for tonight, the previous original resolution, all those criterias have also been met. Um, the replating, excuse me, um, replating to add. The bit of parking and to make it one lot. Um, was done and I think was actually just turned turned in, but it was done quite some time ago. And the other requirement was that they all be a different color, which obviously they are. Um, so this is where we're at. Um, again, everything has been done. All we're asking for this resolution is that we're allowed to keep the steel black, everything else with the H P. Um, they have already approved. Right for that, so you have any other questions or?
On the picture, on the original proposed. Picture that you had there, was it your intent not to do any landscaping in between?
That's, that's a marketing uh, thing that was presented, but even then with the H P, we never discussed um. The actual.
The porches.
We never discussed the landscaping for sure, the porches. We never discussed with H P, there wasn't any concern. Of whether or not, so that is certainly a pamphlet from the marketing. That's what it certainly could look like and we certainly tried to match that. Um, the landscaping, well, we have twelve trees already planted. There's uh, ten aspens. There's a. So there'll be plenty of landscape is when it comes to. Plants, but not that exact look on that photo. And it is, that's what Bonneville puts out of what it could look like.
I know we need affordable housing in town, but I don't know how this ever got past H P in the first place. Especially where it's at in historic district down there. There's no, there's nothing historic about it, but it's there and uh. And all these requirements were made by the city and and H P in the very beginning of this project and most of them weren't even upheld. I don't know why even were able to go forward with the project after all these requirements. But it's there and.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, I think everything was upheld, so I mean, or most.
No, it's torches and balisters and. All kinds of things.
Yeah, that was. Never specified, but regardless of that, um, yeah, again, I get it. It doesn't, it may not be a project that. People may want want or look, but it does look like what we propose and would H P approve and and. Um, obviously, we would have never started either if H P didn't approve it, so we've obviously put in a lot of time and a lot of effort. Um, and it'll really a lot of money. Um, we're obviously not doing this to make any money. It's it's costing us quite a bit. We're doing this so that we can have affordable housing. There is no affordable housing. Our employees are living in, the community is gonna live in it. Um, yeah, two-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath is twelve hundred dollars a month. Um, you can't get anything close to that anywhere, probably Colorado and you know, in this area. Three bedrooms are um, sixteen hundred dollars a month. Um, so for and for our employees, we're paying all their utilities. So it it makes it, um, it is affordable housing. I get not everybody necessarily wants that, but we are the only ones that have, you know. Really stepped up and done that. And again, it's been a lot of time and effort and yes, if we started again, Bruce, I would not have done.
Yeah, I want to see your apartments open, you know, get them all rented out. And regarding affordable housing, yes, uh, some of this other housing that's been built is not affordable. We don't know that.
It is not.
But uh, again, is everything followed to the T? I think that you've been pretty cooperative. Uh, black bough strategy, it didn't bother me at least. But uh.
No, I mean, we're there. Again, we're up the metal stairs for the back. We did a walkthrough with Seager Homes today. Um, we had to change some headings inside that weren't to go. Those are all completed. Um, again, the siding's been completed, the porch lights have already been tra- changed out. Um, so yes, um, I I completely agree with you. It. I think they look great and if any of you want to go inside, they are, they're very, very nice. I mean, they're 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 living it. If you haven't seen them or or been around it, they're not, um, they're affordable housing, but they weren't cheap. And they are modular, but they're nice. They're very nice units. They have washer and dryers inside, dishwashers. All the appliances are there. Um, it it's gonna make living for people that um, you know, can't. Can't afford to live in Purple Creek. Um, and yes, it's gonna be helpful for our employees to do, but it it is living. It's not, it's not a hotel, a triple crown. It's not even, you know, like while what it is. It's living. There's families living in there.
Do you have any plans to separate the parking lot from the buildings at all, like a fence or anything? Obviously, it's a parking lot, people are gonna be living there.
Yeah, that parking lot, the first row will be assigned again, once we can put in for a sign permit, it'll say um, Century Town Homes Parking. Um, and then there's that side sidewalk going up into that area, so that first thing will be. Resident parking. Um, also behind where we are also waiting to asphalt the handicap spot. I'm sorry, I didn't mention that as one thing that we have to do. Um. There's, we own that lot between the bank and the event center too, so we are gonna straighten that out a little bit, um. And it's already straightened out. It's got some where you, but that'll be in uh, resident parking as well. So no, we didn't, we're planning to divide the parking lot, but it'll be. Noticeable where residents can park again during the events and stuff like that. It's kind of a free-for-all.
I am just, I'm glad to see there's something going here. Um, I am a little disappointed because. When it was very first presented to the then council, uh, those little porches were a part of the presentation. Um, I'm a little disappointed that you guys couldn't have. Made those work. Um, I understand you were working with limited lot space, um, but we were presented with. Having those porches, so I am a little bit disappointed that. They're not there.
No, I understand, and certainly we take some responsibility in the in the process of the communication. Um, again, certainly Nate was out for quite some time and we did not have the right communication. We did not talk about the porches until after the. Um, footing for the concrete was already there. Um, so there was no conversation of that, but I do ob- obviously understand and take responsibility that that wasn't done. It isn't. I think it's impossible to do, even unless we tore it all down. As you saw the photo, you can't put another four feet of concrete on those two end units. Of one sixty, um, even one fifty because of the height. You're, you you'd be building a wall and it just wouldn't look right. Again, once it's fully landscaped and the parking is only coming in, it it. It looks really nice. I mean, it it looks like a nice community, so. I I agree and and I understand the disappointment and that and the porches might have looked nicer, but it just wasn't.
No.
It wasn't discussed and then it's too late.
I have no problem with black railings. They definitely hold up and are they doing powder coat on that?
Yeah, it's powder coat.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, again, it's, there is a reason why.
Yeah.
Everybody has black in town. So we would, we would.
I've had this conversation with Eric and I've directed staff. From now on, we will not accept uh, a rendering. Like was presented. From now on, if it's going in the historic district, there will be a drawing. Architects gonna have to make a drawing to submit H P into the city council, so this is the biggest. Issue we've had with this project. I appreciate the project. I don't disagree with Eric. They did bring some affordable housing people. We do need that up here, but to save the issue like this in the future, I think. If it's going in the historic district, it's gotta be drawn by an architect. We're not gonna accept, I already directed staff not to accept. A brochure or something that it could look like. We're not gonna do that because I think that's. That we're having to be. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
If not, well. Do I hear it? Like most of them.
Yeah.
Consideration approval.
Yeah, I will uh, make motion to approve Regulation twenty twenty three dash thirty four. Amending a previous certificate of appropriateness of of the Resolution twenty twenty one dash seventeen. Anything need be added to this?
Uh, the black railings.
Does that have the option of a black?
With the option of a black colored rail.
All right, it says white or trim color or black or white. I think all we have to add is purple. If that's all right.
I'll second.
Vote please.
Council Brown?
Yes.
Council Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Proctor.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Asher?
Yeah.
This concludes our agenda for tonight. Thank you guys.